24, I apologize for the delay. I'd like to call the meeting to order if everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I want to give notice that we had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel and legal issues. And the next is our commendation. Okay, we have a commendation this evening, which we're very proud, from the Radnor Township Police Department, a commendation for life savings for Patrol Officer Kaitlyn Carmelowitz and Supervisor of Auxiliary Services, Michael Meritaya. I'm going to read it. Whereas Officer Kaitlyn Carmelowitz assigned to the Community Services Unit of the Radnor Township Police Department and Supervisor of Auxiliary Services, Michael Meritaya, both employed by Radnor Township during the month of November 2024. Whereas on Wednesday, November 6, 2024, Supervisor Michael Meritaya received a phone call from Radnor Township School Crossing Guard Kitty Davis. While speaking with Ms. Davis, Supervisor Meritaya realized Ms. Davis was suffering from a significant mental confusion and loss of memory. Supervisor Meritaya immediately contacted Officer Kaitlyn Carmelowitz and advised her of his concerns. Officer Carmelowitz responded to Ms. Davis's residence to conduct a welfare check. Immediately recognizing that Ms. Davis was suffering from a significant medical problem, Officer Carmelowitz transported Ms. Davis to Bryn Mawr Hospital for medical treatment. Whereas once at Bryn Mawr Hospital, Kitty Davis was diagnosed with a life-threatening medical condition and was scheduled for immediate surgery. Ms. Davis's surgery was successful, and she is expected to make a full and complete recovery. Now therefore be it resolved that Officer Kaitlyn Carmelowitz and Michael Meritaya of Radnor Township are awarded this commendation of life savings for their dedicated support and commitment to assisting with saving the life of Kitty Davis, both a fellow Radnor Township employee and a Radnor Township resident. Presented on this ninth day of December 2024 by the Radnor Township Police Department, and we thank you both very much.
So I think what we do is I'd ask the person who, a big round of applause, and probably wants to thank these people, but we have a big honor. Kitty, would you please join us up here? And I just, I want to thank you too. You exemplify what Radnor Township staff are about, what our police department is about, and we're just glad to have a scenario like this. So congratulations on your life-saving award.
Next, we're going to start with a presentation, oh there's Adam, I didn't see him for a second, on the Radnor 2035 Comprehensive Plan. We've got our third portion up tonight, and Adam's here to tell us about it.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity once again to present on the Comprehensive Plan. As was noted earlier, this is a third of three presentations that we're giving on the draft Comprehensive Plan. I strongly recommend that if anybody's interested in providing comments, they can go to radnor2035.com commentary or use this QR code to access it. We're asking for comments to be returned to us by the sixteenth, so week from today, so we have time to make revisions and move things forward towards adoption. As a quick overview, I've said this a couple of times, but a reminder that the Comprehensive Plan is aspirational. It looks at a 10-year horizon and provides policy guidance to the township. It is not a legally binding document. It is presented as a framework with a vision statement, goals, and associated strategies and action. And today I'm going to be presenting on the mobility, institution, and land use elements, and we encourage everybody to look back at those other presentations for the other plan elements. We will be going through formal adoption, going to Planning Commission in January. That is going to start a 45-day review by the county. They're going to have their opportunity to give comments. We've already been working very closely with them, and they've had an opportunity to review, so we're hoping that that moves quickly. It does have to go to contiguous municipalities, excuse me, and then hopefully going to adoption in late February, early March. Just a reminder that the plan has gone through a very comprehensive process for development. You can see all the documents that we've done to date at the radnor2035.com library, where we've talked about our previous planning efforts, the existing conditions analysis, all the community and stakeholder engagement work that we've done to date. A reminder that the implementation here is really through four major avenues: regulatory changes, capital projects, partnerships and advocacy, and additional plans and studies. As a reminder, we did a lot of public engagement on this project. We sort of broke these down into these four categories of connect, listen and learn, collaborate and refine, and if anybody's interested in more details about that, see actually the first presentation that I gave. So today what I'm going to do is I'm going to present on the mobility recommendations. In our existing conditions analysis, this isn't going to sort of shock anybody, one of the things that we found was there's a very limited sidewalk network in Radnor. It's really focused on sort of the core historic elements, and in a lot of the areas that developed after that, there really are no sidewalks. You have done a very good job of planning for and beginning to implement a comprehensive trail network. We are strongly recommending that you continue to build that out, and we think that that is a really strong foundation to build off of. The other thing that I want to emphasize today is that Radnor is the location of unfortunately crashes, we're no longer calling them accidents, that result in serious injuries and fatalities. And so this is a map of the last five years in Radnor, where locations of where there have been serious injuries or fatalities. With the ones with a white dot are ones that have involved pedestrians. That's a really important topic, I'm going to explain a little bit of reason why. At a federal level, transportation planning and funding has really shifted, and it's really shifted to something called Vision Zero. And under a traditional sort of roadway design and roadway network approach, sort of engineering approach, the assumption is that traffic deaths are actually inevitable. You sort of assume that a certain number of people are going to die in your roadway network every year. You try to assume, you basically plan on this idea that everybody's perfect, that they all behave on the roadway in a perfect way, and so you design your roads for those perfect users. You're really trying to focus on preventing all collisions, and you put a lot of responsibility on drivers. You say basically, hey, if you were using the old language, an accident, that's your fault, that's not our fault from an engineering perspective. And it sort of comes from this perspective that saving lives is expensive. That has really shifted at sort of a national level, and now at the state and local level to what's called a Vision Zero approach. And that Vision Zero approach is a perspective that says traffic deaths are preventable. And although that may sound kind of crazy at a very fundamental level, there are a lot of communities who have taken this Vision Zero approach and have been successful at it. And the key to that is really recognizing that humans are fallible, that we all don't always follow the rules, we don't all always drive perfectly, and that you need to engineer the roadways in order to specifically address serious injuries and fatalities. And that if you take a systems approach to that, and I can get into more detail later if anybody's interested on what a systems approach is, then you can actually prevent serious injuries and fatalities. And one of the reasons why that is important is because a lot of federal money is now tied to this approach to implementation. And there's a grant out there right now, it's called Safe Streets and Roads for All. It's a multi-year grant that I think Radnor is actually pretty well positioned to start taking advantage of. It is something that, there's a case study up in West Hartford in Connecticut, they did what's called a Vision Zero planning effort. They completed that about a year ago today, and this year they were awarded $3 million in federal funding to make safety improvements on the roadways. One of the great things about the SS4A program is unlike past funding opportunities that come through the federal government, you don't have to go through the DOTs, you don't have to go through DVRPC, your MPO, in order to access the funding. You can actually go directly to the federal government and apply for it. The other great thing is the county has done a Vision Zero plan, DVRPC is working on a Vision Zero plan, and the fact that they have done those plans means that you are, you know, potentially eligible for a lot of this funding, excuse me, a lot of this funding. So something to really be paying attention to. In the goals for the mobility section, there's a lot of focus on multimodal mobility. A lot of the things that we heard in the public engagement process was a desire to see roadways built for people other than just drivers, for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for people of all ages. An emphasis on Vision Zero, preventing serious injuries and deaths, and thinking about your roadway network really as a sustainability effort, and thinking about how you can start working towards achieving a carbon-neutral community through investments in your transportation network. So there have been a couple of recommendations that we've outlined here, and I put them into two groups. The first one is safe and comfortable infrastructure. So that's leveraging SS4A and Vision Zero, sort of building that policy framework to make investments in your infrastructure in order to advance these mobility goals. A big thing that we've focused on is making it safer and more convenient for school-age children to travel throughout the township without a car. You have a big school-age population in this township, and for most of those people, they are essentially e-mobile without the support of an adult, right? They can't go visit their friends, they can't go and go anywhere safely without an adult getting them into a car and driving them somewhere. And, you know, that's a real shame, right? People should be able to travel throughout the community freely. The other reason why we've made this an emphasis is going back to thinking about safety, if you think about your most vulnerable users, your elderly, your school-age children, the people who have disabilities, if you can make your township accessible for those people, it's going to be accessible for everybody. It's just a way of thinking about making your improvements that is very helpful. The other thing that we've focused on in this mobility element is something called traffic and growth management. And the idea being is we know that traffic is an issue for everybody, that Radnor is still a very car-dependent community and will continue to be so for the foreseeable future. And so where new development is coming in, and this ties back to some of the economic development and housing goals that we presented here previously, that it really should be transit accessible, and that those are the places to be investing in because they're going to have the least impact on traffic, they're going to be in locations where you already have the infrastructure. There's a lot of other reasons we can get into for that, but it's a really core recommendation throughout all of the elements. In neighborhoods and in areas where you do have traffic, really coming up with strategies to reduce and calm traffic, and improve access management along key corridors. And what we mean by that is how cars basically move from going on the roadway onto private property, how do they access parking, and how are deliveries made and things like that. There are a number of related strategies in the mobility element. A lot of your mobility goals tie back to your housing and open space recommendations here, so, you know, when you're thinking about permanently preserving sort of key open spaces, if you do that and you don't give growth a direction, a place to grow, and you don't support it with a mobility infrastructure, then you're going to have a lot of externalities, a lot of consequences to that. So there's a real connection to your environmental and open space recommendation. When you think about sustainable development, right, you can build the most green, you know, lead, platinum, super-platinum building, but if everybody's driving to get there, then it's not the most sustainable building in the world. And then again, talking about directing new housing to sort of lower-impact areas, that relationship between mobility and land use is really key and runs throughout the entire comprehensive plan. A couple of key actions that I want to emphasize, there has been a lot of discussion, I know that Route 30 is an interesting corridor, we'll say the least, right? I mean, there's been a lot of conversations over the years about, especially some of the areas through Wayne, but through the entire corridor, what to do with that location. It's got flooding problems, there's traffic issues, parking's a mess. So one of the things that we're recommending is that you collaborate with DOT, the county, DVRPC, to look at a traffic study for Route 30. And DVRPC a number of years ago did sort of a whole Route 30 corridor study, but it wasn't focused on Radnor. And one of the great things about SS4A funding is, we think that you might have a project because of the condition of Route 30, to go to the federal government and basically say, hey, we want funding to do this study. That way you don't have to go through PennDOT, you don't have to go through the county, there might actually be money available for that right now. The other thing is leveraging that Delaware County Vision Zero Plan. One of the things that they've done through the entire county is come up with sort of locations where there are potentially problematic infrastructure. Once again, because the county has done that work, that opens you up to that federal funding. Another thing is we've heard a lot, and it's going to be part of your zoning update, is looking at your off-street parking requirements. We've heard that this is a sustainability issue, it's an economic development issue, it's a pure functional parking issue, we think that there's a lot of opportunities there. And then again, talking about that safe routes to school plan. The more children that you can have walking and biking to school every day, the easier it's going to be for parents, right? You don't have to do pickup and drop-off, but also the less traffic that you're going to see associated with those uses. In terms of institutions, I will say that I like this, this goes back to the percentage of respondents who identified something as a key issue in that first public engagement process that we did. And I like that institutions is all the way at the back of this, because if you had done this maybe 20 years ago when you did your last comprehensive plan, institutional uses would have been much higher up. I think it speaks a lot of volumes to the work that you all have done, working with your institutions to really balance the needs of residents and the needs of institutions. So with that in mind, we've really got two goals here, which is really continuing to leverage those partnerships. They are assets and resources in your community, they have resources that they can bring to bear, but also, you know, you can help them achieve some of their goals. A really good example there are some of the sustainability efforts that are being undertaken by, for example, Villanova. They really very much overlap with a lot of the work that you all are doing. And then, you know, we're necessary minimizing the negative impacts of those institutions around sort of the surrounding communities. So a couple of things, one thing that we think that you should be thinking about is modifying the zoning ordinance to address this issue where you do have some institutions who are starting to parcel out their land, they're starting to develop it, they're trying to sell it off, and right now what you've got is you've got institutional zoning there. And so when they sell that off, it raises this question of like, well, now we've got to go through a variance process in order to do anything that's not an institutional use on that land. And that leaves all of you, I think, in a sort of strange position, because you don't have a vision for what those places should become. And we think that one way to address that would be to set up a series of maybe conditional uses that would allow you to say, okay, if it's not going to be institutional, here is what we think it should be, here are the conditions that we'd like to set up for that to happen. So then you would have a framework as some of those institutions maybe start to parcel out some of their land. The other thing would be to sort of continue to collaborate with universities, to make sure that, you know, as much as possible, off-student housing and the impacts of off-student housing is minimized. It's funny, I was just talking with somebody, I think every college in America has this problem with off-campus housing, and, you know, the key there is partnership. And then finally, land use. Land use tends to come at the end of the Comprehensive Plan because in many ways it's sort of the culmination of all of the other work. So I don't think I'm speaking out of turn here, we've heard a lot that your zoning ordinance is very antiquated and needs a real comprehensive update and rewrite. We've identified some of the core issues in a memorandum that's going to be included in the appendix, but we are recommending a very substantive update to the zoning ordinance. So, you know, the goals are really focused on aligning the township's ordinances with the Comprehensive Plan, and updating the ordinance so that it reduces the needs for variances and special exceptions. I do think one of the things we heard throughout the planning process was this feeling like, hey, the township is doing everything on an ad hoc basis, like, why are you letting this property owner to do that and this property owner to do that? And my read of the situation is that really comes from a misunderstanding of, it's not the township is doing it, it's that the zoning ordinance is so antiquated that you are basically trying to run a NASCAR race with a, you know, 1985 Honda Civic, right? So you're having to strap in all of these things to make it go faster, and it just feels very, you know, discombobulated at that end. And the reality is, is when you have a zoning ordinance, like you've got, a lot of things come to you all, it places a lot of stress on staff because they have to sort out all of these issues, and a lot of communities have found, once they go through a real comprehensive zoning effort, what it does is it relieves some of the stress, it takes away a lot of the burden, a lot of things can go through a by-right process, and that frees all of you up for more time and to focus on other, you know, higher priorities and not dealing with some of the day-to-day zoning and land use issues. Another recommendation here that we put in is making those foundational updates, but also updating the zoning code to address context-sensitive design. And one of the things that I want to just kind of plant in your head and for you all to start to really ruminate on a little bit and think about a little bit is, Radnor is really starting to become a community where growth and change is no longer going to be happening in what's called sort of greenfield development, right? You're largely built out. Most of the property that's going to be developed has been developed or has got plans for development, and as a result of that, everything else is going to start happening through redevelopment, taking properties that maybe are infill or already part of communities, and you're going to have to work within that. And that's a change in perspective. In a place where you're doing greenfield development, you're kind of creating context when you develop, right? So a lot of the neighborhoods that have been built in Radnor over the years, they created their own context, they created their own street networks, they created their own building types. Now you're going to be in a place where it's going to be much more important to be looking at the neighbors, looking at the adjacent properties, and saying, how does this development fit in with its context? And context-sensitive design solutions and context-sensitive zoning is a zoning approach that really thinks about and forces developers and forces applicants to be working within the context of the community. So to shift in perspective, and a result, I need to sort of shift in the type of zoning that you're using. The other thing which I talked a little bit about last time, which is a recommendation to implement a hybrid form-based code, we can get into this in a lot more detail at any point that we want, but basically the idea with hybrid form-based codes is that it sort of sits in between dictating style and just giving people carte blanche to build whatever they want inside a box. The way your current zoning works for the most part is you've got bulk standards, you've got height and setbacks, so you get a box that you can build within. And as long as you're in that box and you're building the use, right, that's permitted, you can do whatever you want. And the result of that, when you're doing more greenfield development, is you've got a little bit more artistic freedom. Developers can do what they want to do within that box, and they can actually create their own context. When you're in an infill condition or where you're in an established community like Radnor is, where you're doing a lot of redevelopment work, that becomes the kind of thing where you get the house or the development that sticks like a sore thumb, right? Because the only thing that the person wanted to do is what they can do in that box. And if you ever want to have some real fun, you've got some time to kill, go look up spite architecture, right? These are people who have been pissed off about something and went out and did something legally, right? But it's, I don't know, it's worth watching or worth looking into. Whereas form is much more about, you give some parameters to the shape of the building, you give some parameters to some of the key conditions that must be met, but you don't dictate style. It's not an attempt to say, hey, we're going to go out and try to play architect here on every single lot through our zoning work. So one of the things that came is sort of at the end of the document is what is called a future land use map, which I'm showing here. The idea here is this is a foundation for future zoning. It is not suggested or meant to be a prescription for what future zoning will look like. It is a sort of idea of like, this is a starting point for the conversation, and it is very much tied to the housing strategy, which I presented last time. So I'm going to kind of flip back and forth here a little bit, but you can start to see very much that those growth areas in the housing section are really identified in this as some of those sort of mixed-use areas and town center areas, transit-oriented community areas, and then some of those managed change areas are those areas in the hatch there. And I just wanted to pause and make it clear, something clear about these hatched areas, what are called residential B areas. The intent is not to suggest that all of these areas should be zoned or will be zoned the same way. That's not the intent. The way that we've talked about these areas are, these are areas where we think because of either the market or the land use and the relationship of the land use to zoning, they are sort of more susceptible to change than a lot of the other areas in, a lot of the other residential areas in the township. And as a result, we're sort of strongly recommending that you all work with the residents in those areas to really think about how to balance the goals of the housing element especially, but all of the goals in the Comprehensive Plan as you do your zoning update. And one of the things you'll see in the Comprehensive Plan, there's a focus on, and it's something that we presented at the in-person community meeting, the sort of trade-offs that happen when you go into thinking about some of these areas. So, you know, as your zoning currently sits in a lot of these areas, it very much encourages redevelopment, it very much encourages large redevelopment, encourages people to demolish homes or add big additions to their home because it allows for that. If you want to change that, that has some trade-offs, right? If you shrink that envelope down a little bit, you're going to limit what people can build out, that's going to have some impact on property values. And it's also going to, if you leave that zoning in place, you're going to start to see some of the continuation of some of the trends that we've talked about in terms of, sort of, it actually was called out in the 2003 Comprehensive Plan, monsterization. Some people call it kind of McMansion-ization of some of these areas. So it's really a focus on balance there, and that's something that's going to So it's really a focus on balance there, and that's something that's going to need some community engagement work as part of that and some real technical analysis. And so one of the things that we really want to emphasize, and it's emphasized on the housing plan as well, is that as you start to do your technical analysis in your zoning, the boundaries of some of these areas may change. And you may be taking some of these off and adding more in because you're going to need to get into a lot more technical analysis around what does zoning permit, what's on the ground. It's just something that's a little bit outside of the scope of the comprehensive plan. But I'm happy to answer any questions about that. So with that, next steps, we are hoping to make a presentation to the Planning Commission on January 7th. Like I said, I'm really encouraging everybody to get their comments in by essentially a week from today so we can make all the changes that we need to do to have that ready. The Planning Commission will then refer it actually back to you all for an adoption process, and I'm going to be working with Bill and Maggie and Moira to figure out exactly what that adoption hearing schedule is going to look like. So with that, thank you very much, and like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions or, yeah.
Thanks so much. Questions for Adam? You put your hand in the air.
All right, I'll go. The Vision Zero.
Yeah.
The Vision Zero. The, I know, I know some cities have done it, and it's really good, like Jersey City.
Yeah, yeah.
And like, they don't have fatalities anymore.
Yeah.
One of the things is that we can take care of our roads, but then there's also state roads that come through.
Yeah.
What can we do with that?
So I think that's the great thing about, one, the funding is federal, so it's coming all the way from the, that's where PennDOT gets a lot of its money, is a lot of it flows down from the federal level. So they're going to increasingly be taking that approach to a lot of their design. But the other thing is, especially on what we're calling the sort of Lancaster Avenue Route 30 study, we strongly suggest that you all lead the charge on that and bring PennDOT in and the county in on that. We think that you all can go to the SS4A program, ask for what's called a supplemental grant. So go and say, hey, we want to do a study on this, here's the reasons why. You can do the study, and PennDOT has got to, you know, generally say, yes, we're interested in participating in that, but you all can essentially initiate that. You don't have to sit on your heels to wait for PennDOT to initiate that. Now, eventually, PennDOT's got to buy in, right? You can't go out and suggest, hey, we're going to drop, you know, Route 30 down to one lane and, you know, we're going to have crossing guards at every intersection. They've got to eventually buy in, but it allows you to kind of drive a little bit more. Yeah.
Other questions, comments? No? You've already answered all mine.
Great, great.
Thanks so much.
Thank you all so much, and I look forward to coming back here in February, March, and finally adopting this. So thank you. And I just want to, oh. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We are going to have a public participation, so there may be somebody that comes up with a question, but, so we will move on to public participation at this point, and there will be public participation on every agenda item as it comes up. So you can either speak now, or you can wait until the specific agenda item, or you can sit there and not speak at all. I'd like you to keep your comments limited to five minutes. Give your name and your street, and it's your turn. Any takers? I see one.
Hello, my name's Jonathan Yates. I live on West Wayne Avenue. I'm a 15-year Radnor resident. I'm also a member of the Radnor Memorial Library trustees, or one of the trustees for the library. And in fact, that's actually why I'm here tonight. I would like to offer a few comments in support of the library, especially in light of the recent and ongoing budget discussions that will impact the library. I'd like to begin by offering my thanks and appreciation for the support that the township already gives to the Radnor Memorial Library and has done for many years. It is very much appreciated. But I'd also like to take a minute and paint a picture, or at least offer a few comments about what the Radnor Memorial Library means to the community. And I'll use myself as an example. So both I and my family use Radnor Memorial Library with great regularity. I would say, on average, at least once a week, we are in the library. This allows me, the fact that I use the library that frequently, allows me to see firsthand the role that it plays, especially for our children and for our local students. For example, if you're in the library with regularity, you'll see that many students from, many local students, they study together. And this is a direct byproduct of the excellent hours that the library has, in the sense of being available and open on weekends as well. It's also, of course, a safe and clean and warm environment where the students can gather. So the students study together. Also, and maybe even more impressive, is just the sheer amount of tutoring that goes on inside the library. Students of all ages, I mean, I don't know exactly how old they are, but oftentimes I see students who look like they are in first grade, second grade, little guys, who are there meeting with tutors, getting helped with academic subjects, that sort of thing. And of course, that runs all the way through high school. On top of that, of course, there is a robust, robust set of programming throughout the week for the smallest children, who meet regularly for storytime and other things like that. And of course, this is also, the storytime, et cetera, is, also provides the mothers in the community a great way to connect and sort of get to know each other, network, et cetera, about other opportunities. In short, I think it's fair to say that the Radnor Memorial Library is a true hub for our township, and it truly serves to build the community, and it is therefore a resource that, in my opinion, we need to continue to prioritize. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public participation?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kate Rodriguez, and I will be speaking in support of Jonathan. I live on Conestoga Road. Hi, Jake. And I am the president of the Radnor Library Board of Trustees. Again, I want to thank you as well for your historic support of the library. It is such an important hub within our community, and your continued support is what allows it to do the amazing things that it does. Specifically, though, tonight, I wanted to make sure that you all are aware of not just the impact that the library has on the lives of the citizens, but also the staff. The staff of the Radnor Memorial Library mean so much to the people who use the services every day. I have two, two little girls, seven and four, and their superheroes are absolutely Ms. Sue and Ms. Maria and Ms. Carrie at the library. It is staff like that who are renowned in the state, they are recognized throughout libraries all over, that make the library what it is. So the increases that we are asking for are absolutely going towards ensuring that we retain these amazing, amazing staff members. We also have more operating hours than most of our neighbors in the area. In order to continue to maintain those operating hours, we need to have the staff. In order to have the staff, we need to be able to pay them competitively. So the increases that we are asking for above and beyond the flat funding that we've had in the past will go towards ensuring that we can be competitive, not just for our part-time staff, which is what the increase went towards last year, but also in our full-time staff and continuing to attract and retain that incredible talent. So I just wanted to make sure that I emphasize just how very important that is. And of course, it would also go towards a small portion in the continuing increases in insurance and operational costs and things like that. And ultimately, you know, continuing to ensure that this amazing institution serves the community. It is such an amenity and such a benefit to the people of our community, as well as people throughout the area. And that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any further public participation? Seeing none, have to look again. I do want to make one comment before we start on the consent agenda. We have elected to table item C in Section 5 of the budget. So if anybody's hanging out for the fee schedule, come back at a future meeting.
Fee schedule?
Yeah, it's the fee schedule. The ordinance introducing the township fee schedules, they just needed to look it over a little bit better before it comes to us. All right, we have the consent agenda up next. Is there any item that a commissioner or a member of the public would like to pull from the consent agenda? Commissioner Agnew.
Sure, well, B, C, and D, since.
B, C, and D. Okay, anybody want to pull A, as long as we're there? No? All right, let's start with item B. This is a motion to approve authorization to receive sealed bids for the 2025 SuperPave program at an estimated construction cost of $850,000 to be funded from the Liquid Fuels Fund. Could I have a motion, please?
Does it move?
And a second?
Are we, we're pulling this one, right?
Well, we're going to, I get a motion and a second, and then we discuss.
Right, well, my first or second, Jim, I'm not sure.
It doesn't matter.
I raised, and Jim raised, and I don't, whichever.
Peggy cares. All right, Mr. Norsini, you want to start us out on this one, please?
Sure, thank you, Madam President. So this is our, the SuperPave program is our annual paving program. It's called SuperPave, that's a PennDOT term. It's our annual resurfacing program. It is, it is funded by the State Liquid Fuels Fund, that's our share of that gas tax. So it's broken down into two pieces. Wherever we had utility work in this year, and they have single-lane paving, we then follow up and pave the other lane, right? That was a decision from a previous board that we should do. The remaining part of that budget is then used to pave township streets like we normally do, the full width across. So what we have is about 1.19 miles of the single-lane paving and about 1.68 miles of the full-width paving that we do for our standard roads. This is done through a sealed bidding process. We use PennBid, so, as opposed to the old-fashioned way. So all bids are sealed, they're unlocked at a certain time, the township is then able to see them. We vet all those bidders and provide to you, when the time comes, the lowest responsible bidder. And I don't know if there is any additional questions from the board?
Yes. Hi, Steve. We talked about this, and it's a good program, but it's a lot of money, so I think the public should know how we get there. Because if you just divide the 18 streets by $850,000, that's $47,000 per street. Sounds like a lot, but I trust that that's, you know, that you think it's a good thing. But could you just sort of explain what SuperPave is and why it is so expensive and, but, sort of, the length of time that we get that makes it worth it?
Let me, let me discuss that one thing. So what we do, we bid our projects on unit prices, and the unit prices are milling, the big one is per ton in place of asphalt, which is all based on measurements. So some roads may cost $12,000, larger roads may cost $112,000, so it's not an average. And it's need-based. So we review roads, we rate roads, and again, it's need-based. So the worst roads are always going to get done first. In, in theory, a tertiary road could last 15 years or more, right? Whereas a secondary road, maybe 10. I think they're conservative estimates, but that's, you know, so we have some on the list that are for sure tertiary roads. Chamon Drive, right, that's a cul-de-sac with like eight homes. That road is in definite need of repaving, but it's only servicing that many homes. So that's, that's a road we hope to get 15 years out of. We do it properly, we mill the, we mill the existing asphalt course off, we then address any base repair if needed, and then it gets resurfaced. And that's the same method we use for the single-lane repaving of the, following up the utility projects.
When Pico, Aqua, or whoever comes in and they dig it up, do they use SuperPave?
They do. So I should probably clarify, SuperPave is a term that PennDOT came, they really shifted the whole way we pave in that the type of asphalt was based on the number of vehicles and the weather that you receive, right? So they started, it's like 20 years ago, they said, we're going to do this right. So that's what the term SuperPave calls for. But often, that's what's used on your driveway or what's in your road, right? It's just, it's asphalt.
I thought it was more than that. I thought it was a special kind of asphalt.
It is, so it's, it's an asphalt mix designed based on the average daily traffic and the temperatures of this region, for the most part. There's a lot of other items, but that's the big, big stuff.
What about the state and county roads?
So we do not resurface any of them, because obviously, they're the responsibility of the state and the county. So we don't touch any of them.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'm going to call this for a vote. It will be a motion to approve authorization to receive sealed bids for the 2025 SuperPave program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous. Item C is Resolution 2024-146, authorizing an application to the Delaware County Council for allocation of county liquid fuel tax funds in the amount of $29,376 for the 2025 Municipal Roadway/Street Improvement Program. Could I have a motion, please?
Move, so move.
So moved by Commissioner Agnew, and a second. And a second. Mr. Norsini again.
Thank you. So this is another annual item, this is our share. We apply to Delaware County Council for an allocation of the liquid, the county liquid fuel tax. And I think when I started here, it was $23,000, and now it's about $29,000. That is rolled into that budget, so that $850,000 includes this, right? It's, so we always get this. And again, it is an annual request we make through the county.
So we're not getting 879, we're getting 850, basically. That's, I just wanted to.
Well, from two different sources, right? This $29,000 is from the county, and that's rolled into that 850.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote on Resolution 2024-146. All in favor?
Aye.
It's uni, oh, you abstained? Okay. We have one, two, three, four, five positives. Commissioner Mal Rooney is off the dais, and Commissioner Larkin abstains. Thank you for clarifying that. Now I have item D, Resolution 2024-148, emergency authorization for municipal maintenance to repair two pumps from the King of Prussia Road Pumping Station for a not-to-exceed amount of $80,000. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Agnew, and a second. And seconded by Commissioner Riley. Mr. Norsini.
Thank you. The King of Road Pumping Station is our largest sewer pumping station. We have two pumps in need of repair. I went through the emergency protocol with the manager, requesting that we are able to get these repaired at, at the noted price. As part of that protocol, that is followed up to go to the Board of Commissioners, which is why we're here tonight. So it's approximately $40,000 a pump, these are sizable pumps, right? They're not something you would see in your home, they're not a sump pump. They are our spare pumps, we have no spare pumps now, and we have one pump that works and one pump in that system that's not working quite so well. So when you have a pumping station that can convey 1 million gallons of sewage a day, it's definitely an emergency to have these backups available, so if one fails, we can literally just put one in place to keep it moving. So that's where we stand today in the request to have these two pumps fixed. That $40,000 includes an evaluation and diagnostics, and that's a ballpark figure we received from Municipal Maintenance, who is the company that services these.
This is not the first time This is not the first time though this has been in front of us, right? This is vaguely familiar, I don't know if it was this year or two years ago.
I think when I was Public Works Director some time ago, we bought these two spare pumps.
Okay.
The first set of spare pumps, right? So this is, this has happened in the past.
And then will we have two spare pumps once these are fixed?
So not to confuse the issue, once we get the two spares back, we're going to send another one out to get fixed. But yes, we will have our spares.
So we won't be stuck?
Correct.
Any further commissioner questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote on Resolution 2024-148. All in favor? Aye? Did you vote yes? So that, that one's unanimous. All right, we have the remainder of the consent agenda, which is item A, approval of the minutes of the November 11th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Could I have a motion, please? Moved by Commissioner Mal Rooney, just to be different. And a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Agnew. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, any public? Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote. All in favor? Aye. Okay, so that concludes the consent agenda. We'll move on to the business agenda. Item A is Resolution 2024-140, final approval slash preliminary final subdivision plan on the 50 to 54 Ferriston Road, i.e. Valley Forge Military Academy, two-lot subdivision with two residential dwellings. I think that's it, yeah. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mal Rooney. Thank you. Aye, welcome back. Do you have anything to present, or want to just give us a quick summary? I mean, we, we're familiar with the project.
Yeah, it's basically, it's Valley Forge Military, Valley Forge Military Academy. They have two lots across from the actual academy, kind of in the residential area. It was all kind of assessed under the main tax parcel, and there's two separate homes. We just want to create two separate lots for those homes, also where it's already connected, no development, nothing like that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Good concise summary there. Any commissioner comments or questions? Any public? Did you have something to add? No? Any public participation on this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote on Resolution 2024-140. All in favor? Aye? It's unanimous. Good luck. Item B is Resolution 2024-147, approval preliminary land development plan for 60 West Avenue leased parking lot and including condominiums and a retail, and retail business, I believe not businesses, at the intersection of Lancaster Avenue and Bellevue Avenue. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Agnew. Mr. Falcone, welcome back.
Good evening. Mr. Lambert's just going to pull up these images here. David Falcone here on behalf of the applicant with respect to the redevelopment of the AT&amp;T parking lot, as well as the 60 West Avenue parking lot. We are seeking preliminary approval tonight for this plan, understanding full well that we would be back to you all for final at a later date. Just a quick, I guess, overview of how we got here, and then I'll turn it over to our engineer, Rob Lambert, who can go through the specifics of the most recent review letters which we've gotten from the consultants dated November 26th. So the project itself is the redevelopment of the parking lot, which sits along Lancaster Avenue and is now used by the public, it's generally known as the AT&amp;T parking lot. It was one of the special use districts identified by the township and its ordinance, which required us to ultimately pursue a conditional use, which we sought and obtained from, from you all many months ago. We are now into the land development stage. As part of that conditional use process, certain conditions were placed on the applicant, which brought us back for this 45-unit building. The first was to undertake interaction with the neighbors, which we've done on a monthly basis, working in conjunction with Commissioner Larkin, to ultimately get a building that we felt was more acceptable to the neighbors, to the community, ultimately to the board and to the township's consultant. So we believe we've done that in large respects, I don't think anybody's, you can have unanimous happiness around the world, but we think we've, we've come a long way in that design, and we believe the design meets the intent of what we were tasked to do. We do continue to have those monthly meetings with the neighbors, and again, we coordinate with Commissioner Larkin. A second item of that approval, which was very important, was securing for the township a movement of the existing parking lease, which was for that front parking lot, to the rear parking lot at 60 West. We have done that, we've secured and approved amendment, which I've submitted to Solicitor Rice, which allows for the current lease to be amended, to change the location to the rear parking lot. Really, I'm imagining a lot of the discussion tonight will be around that rear parking lot, because when we were last in front of you all as part of caucus, we were tasked with going back to AT&amp;T, getting a deeper understanding of exactly what was at that back parking lot. As you know, part of our conditional use process, we presented a plan that showed some more, some more extensive landscaping back in that back parking lot. As we moved through that process, we were told by AT&amp;T, we could not dig into the parking lot itself. At our last meeting with you all, we were asked to press that issue and get more concrete information, if we could, from AT&amp;T as to exactly why we were prohibited from doing that. We got some additional information at those additional requests, we've submitted that to the township, we've continued that discussion, we have now confirmed that it is an impossibility for us to go below that surface. That has then kind of refocused the attention on how we were going to provide landscaping out at that back parking lot that we hope would be sufficient for the, for the township. Kind of a dovetail with that is providing the necessary lighting in that back parking lot. One of the comments we got from the board the last time we were here was to get the lighting as, as best we could, in compliance with industry standards, with township codes, so that it's a safe parking lot. It's important for us, it's important for you, and so, and we've done that. So following that meeting with you all, we went back, we've continued to work very closely with staff, and we've revised both the design of the parking lot, the design of the landscaping, and the design of the lighting in the back parking lot, so that we believe we've gotten as far as we can, based on the constraints that we've been given at that lot. You'll note on the plan, when, when Rob gets up to talk about them, there are two different sized parking spaces in the back lot, and that's intentional. It was to drive up the number of parking spaces. You'll find that the number of parking spaces that are provided in the, in the new lot exceed what exists today in the AT&amp;T lot, which fronts on Lancaster Avenue. That was, that was a goal of this applicant, was to provide additional parking that we had today. In order to do that, we worked very closely with Mr. Norsini's team and with, with Mr. Dennis in getting the, the size of the spaces right, when considering both the WBOD, as well as the, just the general ordinance of the township. So what you'll see is, again, different spaces based on the traffic patterns that we've, we've revised. Again, part of those discussions with staff was to, in fact, change the circulation in that parking lot, and that was to provide for the ability to get those additional parking spaces. With respect to lighting, you'll hear from Mr. Lambert, and we also have our lighting consultant here tonight, that we have increased the size of the poles that surround the lot, and we've also included a couple of additional poles, that we now light the entire parking lot to an industry standard minimum. So we do not go below what the, what the industry requires for lots of this size, we meet or exceed in all areas of the township, both on a location basis, as well as on an aggregate basis for the, for the lot itself. You'll hear from Mr. Lambert tonight, a number of waivers that we're seeking as part of this application, many of them have been discussed with the township. I'll turn it over to Rob now, just to walk through the engineering letters. I just wanted to give the board an overview on what we've done since we were last with you, so that you know that there was actual activity that was done, and we think we've made good progress, but that we are absolutely constrained, and now we know for sure that there are, there are realistic constraints there.
Thanks, appreciate the summary, though. Mr. Lambert?
Good evening. I think Dave covered most of what I was going to say, but I'll reiterate some of it. So we have the two review letters, one from Gannett Fleming and one from Gilmore, and as Dave alluded to, many of the comments related to the development sites, so the site of what's the Bellevue lot now, are either, you know, final or a kind of a minor detail. So a lot of the discussion's going to be focused on the rear parking area. We have the nice rendering up, if you recall those, happy to go through, we have all of those, but... So kind of the threshold for this project, when we looked at it, so this is what's now the Bellevue parking lot, so Bellevue and Lancaster, was to replace this parking. So this is 103 parking spaces that currently exist. Rate on West Avenue, so this is Bellevue in the bottom left, so this is West Avenue. So this is the existing AT&amp;T parking lot that's used for their staff. What our original intent, when we endeavored to do this, was to actually add landscape islands, traditional landscape islands, be able to dig into the ground, and be able to provide all of that landscaping, provide lighting within that parking lot. When we presented that to AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T gave us a hard stop, and it was, no, you can't proceed with that. We went back and forth with them for a long time, trying to figure out exactly what we could do there. And it really came down, because of underground infrastructure, that we can't go underneath the existing asphalt. So then, we worked with Jonathan Alderson's team to come up with a creative landscape plan, right? It's not your traditional landscape. What we've done is done rolled asphalt curbs with a river rock kind of in those, inside those curbs, right? Really to break up that surface material and aesthetic. And then in those islands is to put planters, and kind of in the bottom right is an example of what one of those planters would look like, and put in a variety of plants all throughout the parking lot, really just to break up the parking field itself. We worked with Radnor staff and consultants on the design. If you remember, the original design didn't necessarily have as many islands, and so we went back and really worked on the design to create as many parking spaces here as possible while meeting the township code. So this plan shows 110 parking spaces. There are perpendicular parking spaces, which are nine by 18, and then the angled parking spaces are nine by 20. It was a little nuance of the code, but again, working with Damon Drummond, we are providing the nine by 20 spaces to provide a little bit longer length in all of the angled parking spaces, but as you see, a lot of the perimeter spaces are all the perpendicular, and we're able to gain back those spaces. So not only did we add more islands to the plan, but we gained parking spaces in the redesign. So I think it was really a win-win, working back and forth. And then, I know you can't read any of this, but this is the lighting plan. So we, again, we worked with the lighting consultant, and what are shown around the perimeter are, some are existing, some are proposed, new lights, is really being able to light this parking lot all from the perimeter. Last month, when we were here, we talked about potentially putting up solar poles in the center, and the question of how effective and long-lasting they were. We went back and really looked at it, to be able to provide those lights on the perimeter, and really the two lights in the left-hand side here on the perimeter are really kind of the key lights. We were able to go close to the property line, so they're, to be out of the underground infrastructure, to be able to put in a traditional light pole, and were able to light the parking So we have a few waivers that we're requesting. Most of them are directed toward this parking lot. The one general waiver we've requested...
Excuse me, Mr. Lambert? I'm sorry, Madam President, I have a question.
No, that's all right. Mr. Norsini?
Could you go, could you go back to the photometric? And this hasn't changed since the November 26th, since last submission?
Correct, this has not changed since last.
So I know your lighting expert is here, let's, could you go through the standards that you, that was referenced by Mr. Falcone, as far as the parking lot and the foot candles?
Yeah. I'm going to, I'm going to punt on this one.
I could understand that.
Just going to pull up the, the full lighting plan, so he has all the information.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Bradshaw, I'm a lighting designer at Beam LTD in Glen Side, Pennsylvania. Been a lighting designer for about 10 years now, and I do hold my LC, the Professional Lighting Certification. So this parking lot meets or...
Can you speak a little closer to the mic and speak up, please?
Sorry. This parking lot with this revised design does meet IES recommendations and standards. IES recommends a 0.2 foot candle minimum for horizontal at the ground, and a 0.1 foot candle minimum vertically, measured at five feet. We've run the calculations, and we do meet this, and in general, sorry, in general, a, we would consider a decent parking lot to be above one foot candle average, and we are also above that. I'm not sure if there's any specific questions that, that need to be answered.
Mr. Norsini?
Actually, I do have a question, and if I may approach the desk.
Please do.
And I am in no way challenging you to the next one, but I do have to, if I may supply this.
Absolutely.
I'm going to click you out here for a second. I would like to pull up my folder, which...
Thanks, Adam. Okay, so... It was from the E drive?
Remember, we had just minimized it.
Yep. Thank you, sir. Perfect. So, and I fully understand what you had, you're, sorry, what you had said. In, in some research we have done, and in some of our past parking lots, the minimum standard at the ground was 1.0 foot candle and 0.5. And here's, here's my concern. So this area in red is where everything is mainly 0.1 to 0.4. Out on the perimeter, we have three-foot candles, it's very bright, you can read the ID on your key fob. But the concern is, in a very popular part of the parking lot, right? So when people are going to park here, they're going to want to park in here, but there's a lot of ADA spaces. This is a very popular spot. Very bright out here along the perimeter, super bright, but here, which I, they're called the premium parking of the parking lot, is where it's the darkest. So I have concerns, and like I say, I'm no expert, but most of our parking lots that come in are in the .5 to .1 in that area. And now we're at 0.1, 0.2, 0.3, 0.4. So could you help me out on that a little bit?
Absolutely. So we are not point one foot candles anywhere in the center, just to start off the bat. And then, in terms of safety and security, IES recommendations are the national and international standards and recommendations by a whole group of people way smarter than I am, and that is generally what we follow. We have seen some townships that do adopt one foot candle...
We all understand an average. It's ferociously bright along the perimeter, but in that shape is our 0.1, .2, .3, .4. So I get the average, but we have a concentrated area of the lower foot candles, not necessarily the standard you're talking about, what my research was, and again, I'm no expert, you are, and we don't, most of our parking lots that have come through are not at that low a level. And that's my concern, that this is going to be a parking lot that's well-used, and literally the center of it is the darkest part.
Okay. For reference, the existing parking lot on Bellevue?
So we talked about this last time. Don't use a substandard parking lot to compare what we're looking for, right? We know that that has one huge street light in the middle of it, so not necessarily what we were looking for.
Okay. All I can-
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can you make it better?
In the area that Steve has outlined, there are a number of islands that are already there. Is there a technology that exists where you could take a big, flat foot of a lighting standard and put the foot embedded within one of the planter boxes? So you're not at risk this thing is going to blow over, but then you would have a lighting standard, which is solar, so it doesn't need to be connected to anything subsurface, but it's right in the area and lighting the area that Steve is concerned about. Is there any reason we couldn't do that?
I believe that was one of the approaches that was taken previously, and we got feedback that there were concerns about the longevity and how well the solar poles actually worked. If that's something the board would like us to investigate, again, we can certainly look into that.
If I could just offer some feedback here a little bit. So, if I understand Mr. Norrisini's comments correctly, we're talking about an area in the middle, and there are no .1, is that correct?
So, .2, .3, .4, still below the standard we looked at. So we're mincing words with 1/10 of a foot candle.
Understood. I just think, when we were here last time, there were areas of the lot that I think even had .0, there were .1s, and we were told and asked to increase that as much as we could, and we got to our expert, who came back with this increased design. And the area we're talking about in the middle is maybe 14, 18 parking spaces in a parking lot of 110 new spaces.
Mr. Falcone-
Is that right?
I'm going to interrupt you for a moment. So when you go to Wayne and Park, are you going to want to park in the far northwest corner? No, you're going to want to park as close as you can. Those are, those, aside from the ones along West Avenue, are your more premium spots, along with the ones on the property line or the other. I'm not trying to be argumentative, but they are premium spots. My concern is, we're inviting and we're telling people, we have new parking for you to come and join Wayne. My concern is that they are comfortable at night going back to their car, and I understand what your expert said, and I understand the averages. I looked at some different standards, I'm no expert. I'm just telling you, from what I see at the face, 0.234 in that general area is not, doesn't sit well.
Understood.
And we get one crack at this. That goes in, and you folks are gone, we are left with an underlit parking lot, if that's the case.
Understood. And with all due respect, so we have to rely on our expert. That's why we have experts. So, when we left here, we went to a parking lighting expert, and we said, what is the standard? And they came back with, this is the standard. And we said, well, you have to make sure this parking lot meets or exceeds in all areas the industry standard, the national standard for parking lots. At some point, we understand it would be better for folks if the parking lot were more lit until it gets to a point where it's too lit. This is what we could achieve. And to do that, we were able to squeeze two additional light poles in and raise them all to 15 feet, which now has a lot that is by and large, 90%, 85% lit without concern. And the middle of the lot, whether it's the most ideal parking lot, parking spaces, I'm guessing it is, I mean, if I were going here to park, I'd park at the closest spot I could find, maybe because I'm lazy, but that would be where I would go. I'd do the same thing at the grocery store. So, all we can do is rely on our experts. It's what every applicant has done in every application I've ever had. You go and you find an expert. But this isn't an expert coming to tell you anything other than what the industry standard is. And his task was very clearly, make this lot meet or exceed the requirements of what drives parking lots across the country.
Mr. Falcone, so past parking lots here have not used, so our code is vague, right? It's vague.
I'm sorry, I didn't, is what?
Past, our code is vague.
I'm sorry.
Past parking lots that have come through here have not been at that minimum, right? Many, it may be a national code, but many municipalities use the 1.0 foot candle, right? So that may be a national standard, and it may be the better standard, but I know that some of our surrounding communities use that, or use .5. So instead of going back and forth here all night, I will ask you a question-
Sure.
-that we, I think we can cover this with. We've done this in other subdivisions. If the board approves this as it sits, there will be a note in the agreement that says, this lighting will be evaluated once it's installed, and if the township does not feel it's adequate, the developer will address it. Because Dave, Mr. Falcone, that is the premium parking, right? All along West Avenue is ADA. You have this piece on the side by the utilities, that's where people are going to park. Folks aren't going to park in that corner by the railroad just for kicks and giggles, you're only going to park there if it's crowded. You're not going to be like, hey, that's where I want to go, it's very well-lit. So, I mean, I think between you and Mr. Rice could craft something for the resolution as well as the plan set that states that. Because I guess I, I don't want to go against your expert, but I know municipalities use a different standard. It's brighter, maybe it's too bright.
Right.
But that's what we've used, and that's what we're more used to in this community. And my concern is, once it's built and in, if it is too dark, we have nowhere to go other than having a dark parking lot.
And I don't know the answer to this, and I probably should, you will. What is the actual, is Radnor 1.0, that's what your code requires?
The code is vague on that, right? But other parking lots that have come through here, it's zero spillover, right? We're all the same on the zero spillover.
Yep, I know that.
I think you have a little spillover on the east property, but that's the AT&amp;T utilities and all that. That's no big deal. It's usually 1.0 across the board. As your expert said, that may be deemed too bright. So I'm thinking, okay, we've seen other standards that are 0.5. I just don't want the township to have to find a solution to a problem we didn't create if this should go through. If it doesn't, if everything is fine, Mr. Falcone, everything, we go. But if it's not, I would like the township to be covered, that the developer would work with us, would actually work to do, to get that area better lit. And we can do it objectively. We'll all meet out there at 10 o'clock at night, and we can bring light meters and all that good stuff.
I mean, I have to talk to my client about that, Mr. Norrisini. I can't agree to that on the spot.
I know, I threw it at you, but-
Yeah. I mean, I do have, I do have some concerns with that. I, you know, we're working towards an ordinance that doesn't have a standard, that some of these others do. We hired an expert, we revised our parking plan, we brought new lights in, we worked to a standard, and I think my concern is, if we say, okay, well, we'll just continue revising this lot until the township is happy, it starts to become like we're chasing our tail a little bit, against a target we can't define.
So, Mr. Falcone, if this parking lot came in under another subdivision, so let me back up. Through no fault of the township, the applicant is unable to excavate in this parking lot. That's not our fault. So, none of what you're doing would meet our normal SALDO requirements for plantings. If I'm correct, we only have, what, five bald and burlap trees? There would be a dozen or more in that parking lot. So through no fault of the township, the applicant can't meet our normal SALDO requirements, right? So, what I'm saying is, you make it sound like we've done everything we can. If this was a parking lot that was brought in, another commercial development, we would not be using a standard of 0.2 foot candles. It would be greater, that's the way they come in. You cannot put islands in, so you have planters. It's not the fault of the township, and we can't speak for the applicant. So what I'm saying is, there's a lot of deficiencies in this parking lot. You make it sound like it comes in up to snuff. There are a lot of deficiencies, not at our fault, but because you can't excavate. We get that. So what I'm asking is, that the best foot forward, I'm not asking you to redesign the parking lot time and time again, I'm asking for a specific note regarding lighting.
Again, you know, I-
Not to be answered tonight.
Right. I just, I, sorry, I'm selfish.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Actually, it's to Mr. Norrisini over there. We have solar in the South Wayne lot.
Yes, ma'am.
How deep does it go?
Very sizable lights, and they're very heavy, they're state-of-the-art.
And they go, they go down?
They go down pretty greatly.
They don't just go out?
We had discussed with the applicant, and Mr. Falcone, or it might have been, Mr. Lambert had noted, they brought up, we talked about, okay, put one of the planters there, put the light standard in, fill it with concrete, could that do it? So that's not there? I don't know, I forget why you said why you were worried about one of your teams.
So their expert said that we, on the township side, that that would create issues with respect to safety and the reliability of the solar. I'm hearing from you that that's not actually a concern that you have, so that might be an idea that's worth revisiting?
That is not a concern we had, as a matter of fact, we discussed it, right? And I think that idea came outside of staff, that place a pole in there, fill it with concrete, you know, obviously some design. And that could help, that could, because you have two islands there that have nothing, or when I say islands, you see those two in the middle, Dave? In the middle of the red shape, right? There's nothing there. There's no planters, there's nothing, let alone plants, but perhaps that's an area where we could get some light. It's a, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but if you folks go away and we have a problem, now it's a township problem, and it shouldn't be a township problem.
Excuse me for one second, please. Would it be possible to maybe take a five-minute break?
Absolutely. I had another idea I was going to throw out.
Yeah.
Is, the other way to access that middle spot is via a cable slash Archie kind of thing that has a light that comes down from it. So you're going up from the periphery, whether it's two poles and a cable with a light, or an Archie thing, I don't, I'm not an architect or an engineer, so, anyway, just another idea.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I had wanted to raise one other issue with you guys, so that you could just do all the conversations on the back end, not having to do with lights, though. I'm fully aware from reading your plans and from listening to you guys tonight, that the concept of the 90-degree parking is to create additional spots over and above what was already in the Bellevue lot. What I've heard repeatedly is that we really don't have a parking problem where we need to maximize the number of spaces, but we do have a convenience problem where people have this feeling that it's hard to park, they have to walk like two blocks, and as a result, they don't want to come to downtown Wayne, even though they'd walk the exact same distance if they were going to the King of Prussia Mall or the Tridifferent Town Center. Given that, I do not think that this should be a holdup to preliminary approval, but I'm wondering if the applicant has the appetite, as a condition of final approval, to change those 90-degree spots to curved parking or angled parking, just to make it easier to get in and out. May not be a good idea engineering-wise, there may be good reasons not to, but I wanted to just put that out there, since you're going back to perhaps have a conversation with-
Thank you.
Well, since you're going back-
Change it, wait.
I'm sorry, on the lights, you back on?
No, I want to ask Jack just to, I didn't quite catch what your suggestion is. What are you pointing at?
Along the northern edge-
Yeah.
-there are 90-degree parking spots.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Commissioner Larkin, if I, and we will discuss it, we anticipate that would cause a reduction in about two dozen parking spaces. So it would be a significant reduction, we can certainly revisit it.
Withdraw.
Okay.
Withdraw.
Thank you.
Thanks. Along the same line, we had talked about this, and I thought we sort of had an agreement, but I want to make sure. Along the same line of Steve talking about not being a township problem in the future, and that's the, I'll call it the greenery, and we had talked about you guys maintaining it.
Yes, Commissioner Larkin, we have agreed, we have agreed to entertain, take that on. The minutes, yes. At your request.
Thank you.
Yes.
Five-minute recess?
Please.
Fine, well-
Thank you.
Yeah, 5:10, something like that.
those 90-degree spots to curved parking or angled parking, just to make it easier to get in and out. May not be a good idea engineering-wise, or maybe good reasons not to, but I wanted to just put that out there, since you're going back to perhaps have a conversation with the board.
Thank you.
Well, since you're going back, I'm sorry, on the lights, you back on?
No, I want to ask Jack just to, I didn't quite catch what your suggestion is. What are you pointing at?
Along the northern edge, there are 90-degree parking spots.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Larkin, if I, and we will discuss it, we anticipate that would cause a reduction in about two dozen parking spaces.
That's a lot.
So, it would be a significant reduction. We can certainly revisit it.
Withdraw.
Okay.
Withdraw.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Along the same line, we had talked about this, and I thought we sort of had an agreement, but I want to make sure, along the same line of Steve talking about not being a township problem in the future, and that's the, I'll call it the greenery, and we had talked about you guys maintaining it.
Yes, Commissioner Agnew, and we have agreed to entertain, take that on.
Okay.
At your request.
Thank you.
Yes.
Five-minute recess?
Please.
Fine.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, 5:10, something like that.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
The last waiver is one that we've asked for. So, that was the only one that's really related to the development piece. The remaining waivers are really related to the parking lot, this West Side parking lot that we've been talking about. The first waiver was 255-29A-1. It was the discussion of the drive aisle. Perpendicular parking is not permitted on a one-way drive aisle under the code, and so we've asked for a waiver to permit one-way traffic on, with perpendicular parking spaces. The second waiver was related to 255-29B. It was the minimum number of trees within a parking lot because of the issues we talked about. The additional waiver was 255-80B-2. This is a specific section for the Wayne Business Overlay that said you can have no more than five consecutive parking spaces. The other section of the code is 255-29A-6, which says that you can have no more than 10 parking spaces in a row. We meet the 10 parking spaces, but we don't meet the five, and so we'd have to add many more islands to get five parking spaces in a row. And quite frankly, it's just add to the parking field. So, we've asked for a waiver for that. And then, I believe Mr. Falcone was gonna talk about 255, what is it, 43, 1B-1 or 1B-2?
The last waiver is one that we've mentioned during the conditional use, which is a request with respect to the additional fees for the open space for this project. We are asking for a waiver for the additional contribution there, in light of moving the building back, preserving that open space in front, which is kind of the existing walk area, as well as for undertaking the maintenance of both that area and the back parking lot area. Those things are relatively significant monetary encumbrance, I guess, for the HOA, and in exchange for that, we'd like to see a waiver of the additional funds that are being requested for open space and park area, park and recreation.
Sorry, I'm not looking at right in front of me. What is that, what's the cost to you for that?
It is-
On which condition was it?
So, I believe we're on number 11 in the Gannett letter, and it's a 3,000, no, that's the retail, I'm sorry. So, looking at the wrong one. Yeah, so it's number 10, I'm sorry. It's 1,440 square feet, suitable park, recreation land, and then $3,307 per dwelling unit.
And what's your basis for asking to waive that?
So, when we initially, I'm sorry. Yes, so when we came as part of the original conditional use, if you recall, our building was all the way up front, and we eliminated the entire walk and green area. We heard that it was significant to both the neighbors, as well as to the commission, that the building come back and we preserve that green area. So, we've done that at the cost of a couple of units in the building, as well as design, and then, in addition, we were asked to undertake the maintenance and upkeep of that area, which is presently a township item. And then, we were also asked to maintain the rear parking lot, which, again, will be, it's currently a township item in the front parking lot, and we've agreed to all of those things. So, in exchange, we are asking for recognition of that activity, as well as a waiver for this additional parkland.
Do you have a financial sort of breakdown of what you think your costs are, as, you know, side by side with what we require?
We do, so we think the maintenance, we've put it out to bid, for the back lot is going to be, just again, the back lot itself, approximately $50,000 per year. And then, for the front, for the front piece, it's going to be similar to that, obviously it's a different type of maintenance, we haven't gotten a full bid on that yet, we asked specifically for the rear parking lot, just to get an understanding, Commissioner Agnew, just so we understood what that number was. So, we think it's a relatively significant ongoing cost that we're entertaining.
Can I, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And that's actually consistent with the ordinance, right? The ordinance contemplates specifically, if you provide open space, that the fee is reduced or waived, correct?
That's correct.
And any idea what the square footage of the squiggly path green space in front of the building is?
I don't know that offhand, I don't know.
And when you talk about maintenance of this planterized parking lot, is it basically replacing dead plants, watering?
Mulching, correct, just general upkeep, the number of visits per year and so forth, and the cost, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Anyone want to speak from the public on this, public participation?
Thank you, John Aiken, 116 South Bellevue Avenue. Can you pull up the artist's rendering of the building you had earlier in the evening with all that nice brickwork and stuff? Oh. Yes, that's, thank you. In all of the artist's renderings that I have seen over the course of this, all of them have a widened Bellevue, South Bellevue Avenue. Now, my question is, are there any plans in the future, tentative or otherwise, or that there's a plan to widen Bellevue Avenue to help mitigate the already difficult traffic? Because South Bellevue Avenue is a narrow street, basically designed for carts and horses. It's already not sufficient to carry the trucks and the large cars and the traffic that comes off of Route 30. So, my question is, is there any plans, tentative or otherwise, to widen Bellevue Avenue? And since your renderings here, every one I've seen in the last year has a wider Bellevue Avenue. Are you hoping to widen Bellevue Avenue? Is the township planning to do that? And will the eminent domain processes that are being worked on in the township, would they be used to take property either from the AT&amp;T, the two parcels, or from those of us who live on that street? Which, by the way, we're all senior citizens. I'm probably the oldest one at 76. The other ones are youngsters. So, is there any plan to widen the street at any time? And if so, where would the property be taken from? The AT&amp;T lots or from us residents on the west side?
I don't believe you have a, I think it's a perspective look at the pictures to make it look nice and give you a better view of the building. I don't think either the builder owners here or the township have any plans to widen Bellevue. Can I say that we'll never have a plan to widen Bellevue? I can't say that.
So, you're, you don't know, essentially?
Well, I know that right now, neither we nor they have a plan to widen the road.
There's no plan to widen Bellevue.
At the moment, at any rate. Why would you have to alter the drawings to make it look nicer? Why not have it as they are? Because when I saw all of them with a wider street, I thought, is there a plan to widen the street? And that had never been addressed. That's my question.
I think it's just the artist interpretation. I don't think that there was any intent to change it, it was just a way that they were rendering it.
(inaudible).
All right, let's come back to order. We're back.
Thank you for that break. I think we made some progress. So, in speaking to your solicitor, as well as to Mr. Norsini, and my client, I think what we would propose, if it would kind of please the board, is a condition that says, six months after the building is complete and operational, the parties would meet in the lot, the township and either the HOA or the applicant, and determine whether additional lighting was needed, and it would be a mutually agreed-upon determination. Is that correct? If that would please the board, I think.
Thank you.
Do you have a question? By mutually agreed upon, is it, would the cost of it still remain on your client? Or is that open for agreement at that time, the way you're phrasing it, Mr. Solicitor?
I would say the cost is on the applicant, yeah. I mean, but it's got to, because I don't think anyone knows what it's gonna look like once it's built, but give it six months, and if it's a problem, we meet and come up with some mutual solution at their cost. Yeah.
Sounds good.
What if you can't come to an agreement?
I think you probably keep trying until you do.
Yeah. I mean, is there some criteria that we're basing this on?
So, it's a very good question, Commissioner Agnew, right? So, there is no township criteria. We brought in experts' criteria. Mr. Norsini has additional criteria, so we're clearly in some disagreement over what is the criteria to build to, but I think what we're hoping is there's an eye test out there that both sides can be reasonable and agree to. And that's, it's, I think it's a leap of good faith in some respects on the part of the township, as well as the applicant at this point. So, that's, I understand the concern.
The applicant is a corporation. Yeah?
It's a partnership, it's an entity.
Entity.
Yes.
And it will be existing for how long? Because, you know, sometimes people, things are built, and it's, you know, 1, 2, 3, ABC Street, and it only exists for, until that house is built, or that building is built. And so, there is no applicant to go back to.
So, I'll note, in this specific instance, the obligation to continue that maintenance is going to be an HOA obligation that's assumed by the association, which is all of the community owners. So, there will always be a party that is obligated to the township in this parking lot.
So, how can you compel an HOA that doesn't exist yet?
So, the HOA will be created pursuant to a declaration that will be submitted to Mr. Rice and then recorded in the Recorder of Deeds, and it will be a matter of title for every unit owner.
It'll be a planned condition.
That it, okay.
Yeah.
That they'll have this obligation, these obligations. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Rice, are you happy with it?
Yeah, I think it's the only solution, because, you know, until it's built and you look at it, you know, that'll be an additional condition I'll add to the resolution. So, if the board's inclined to approve it with that additional condition, then we'll write it up and, you know, I think we're good to go. It's preliminary plan approval, it's not final plan approval.
Right.
They're coming back again.
Well, we'll get it written up before final.
Yeah.
Good. All right. Are we on to public participation?
No.
No. Well, you've got more to go. Great.
I'll be quick. So, we have a few waivers. The first waiver is a waiver you've seen many times. It is for showing significant features within 500 feet of the site. So, that's a standard waiver we've asked for. That's Section 255-20B-1N. So, that was the only one that's really related to the development piece. The remaining waivers are really related to the parking lot, this West Side parking lot that we've been talking about. The first waiver was 255-29A-1. It was the discussion of the drive aisle. Perpendicular parking is not permitted on a one-way drive aisle under the code, and so we've asked for a waiver to permit one-way traffic on, with perpendicular parking spaces. The second waiver was related to 255-29B. It was the minimum number of trees within a parking lot because of the issues we talked about. The additional waiver was 255-80B-2. This is a specific section for the Wayne Business Overlay that said you can have no more than five consecutive parking spaces. The other section of the code is 255-29A-6, which says that you can have no more than 10 parking spaces in a row. We meet the 10 parking spaces, but we don't meet the five, and so we'd have to add many more islands to get five parking spaces in a row. And quite frankly, it's just add to the parking field. So, we've asked for a waiver for that. And then, I believe Mr. Falcone was gonna talk about 255, what is it, 43, 1B-1 or 1B-2?
The last waiver is one that we mentioned during the conditional use, which is a request with respect to the additional fees for the open space for this project. We are asking for a waiver for the additional contribution there, in light of moving the building back, preserving that open space in front, which is kind of the existing walk area, as well as for undertaking the maintenance of both that area and the back parking lot area. Those things are relatively significant monetary encumbrance, I guess, for the HOA, and in exchange for that, we'd like to see a waiver of the additional funds that are being requested for open space and park area, park and recreation.
Sorry, I'm not looking at right in front of me. What is that, what's the cost to you for that?
It is-
On which condition was it?
So, I believe we're on number 11 in the Gannett letter, and it's a 3,000, no, that's the retail, I'm sorry. So, looking at the wrong one. Yeah, so it's number 10, I'm sorry. It's 1,440 square feet, suitable park, recreation land, and then $3,307 per dwelling unit.
And what's your basis for asking to wa-
So, when we initially, I'm sorry.
What's your reasoning to ask to waive that?
Yes, so, when we came as part of the original conditional use, if you recall, our building was all the way up front, and we eliminated the entire walk and green area. We heard that it was significant to both the neighbors, as well as to the commission, that the building come back and we preserve that green area. So, we've done that at the cost of a couple of units in the building, as well as design, and then, in addition, we were asked to undertake the maintenance and upkeep of that area, which is presently a township item. And then, we were also asked to maintain the rear parking lot, which, again, will be, it's currently a township item in the front parking lot, and we've agreed to all of those things. So, in exchange, we are asking for recognition of that activity, as well as a waiver for this additional parkland.
Do you have a financial sort of breakdown of what you think your costs are, as, you know, side by side with what we require?
We do, so, we think the maintenance, we've put it out to bid, for the back lot is going to be, just again, the back lot itself, approximately $50,000 per year. And then, for the front, for the front piece, it's going to be similar to that. Obviously, it's a different type of maintenance, we haven't gotten a full bid on that yet. We asked specifically for the rear parking lot, just to get an understanding, Commissioner Agnew, just so we understood what that number was. So, we think it's a relatively significant ongoing cost that we're entertaining.
Can I, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And that's actually consistent with the statute, the ordinance, right? The ordinance contemplates specifically, if you provide open space, that the fee is reduced or waived, correct?
That's correct.
And any idea what the square footage of the squiggly path green space in front of the building is?
I don't know that offhand, I don't, no.
And when you talk about maintenance of this planterized parking lot, is it basically replacing dead plants, watering?
Mulching, correct, just general upkeep, the number of visits per year and so forth, and the cost, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Anything else to present?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Public participation. Anyone want to speak from the public on this, public participation?
Thank you, John Aiken, 116 South Bellevue Avenue. Can you pull up the artist's rendering of the building you had earlier in the evening with all that nice brickwork and stuff? Oh. Yes, that's, thank you. In all of the artist's renderings that I have seen over the course of this, all of them have a widened Bellevue, South Bellevue Avenue. It was just a way that they were rendering it.
This is not an interpretation, looking at this, these are wider streets than there are now. So it's not an interpretation, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. Any other public participation?
Yeah, I think, I'm going to jump in with another question. I think I still don't have the accounting of you're asking for a waiver on the open space. All I heard was $50,000 to maintain the plants in the back parking lot and unsure of what it would take to maintain the front. But, you know, it's a, it's a significant element, I think, in our township to try to protect open space. And when developers present to us, that's, again, an important element. So if I could just really understand the financial comparison between what you expect to be paying versus what you're asking us to relieve?
Right. So the relief we're seeking is $3,307 times 45. Somebody back here is going to do, I'm sorry?
It's $150,000.
There you have it.
So, but just, this is a subdivision ordinance provision that you have, and they're asking for a total waiver. And that subdivision ordinance provision says that you either dedicate park and rec land of 2,500 square feet per 6,400 square feet of floor area. And I don't know what that number is, because I don't know what the floor area is. But that's a 2,500 square feet per 6,400. Or in lieu of doing that, you pay this park and rec fee $3,307 per dwelling unit. So that's the 148,815. I don't know whether the required park and rec area is that. I suspect that's smaller than the required park and rec area.
For sure, for sure it is. We aren't suggesting that the area that we've preserved out front is the equivalent of the required square footage for the open space land. That is not what we are suggesting. What we are, what we are asking for is a waiver in light of the changes that were made to the plan and the other concessions the applicant has made through this process, both that speaks specifically to maintaining that area on the township's behalf, maintaining the rear parking lot, readjusting the building. And then also, you know, we agreed to a flat $10,000 per unit fee of $450,000, just giving it to the township for any number of items, traffic improvements, sidewalk improvements or anything else. So we feel as if the request, while it may not seem one-to-one on the open space area, we believe that the steps the applicant has made in that specific regard, but then in general as part of the application in total, is significant.
Remind me again what you thought it would cost to maintain your landscapers to do the west lot?
Approximately $50,000 is the estimate that I reviewed.
Per year?
Per year. That's correct.
And we're not actually talking about $180,000, it sounds like, because even if there's only 50% of the land is represented by that front park that's being created, park that's being created, there should be a discount off of that 180 for that, right?
148.
148, apologies. 148 comes down to something closer to 75,000 or something.
And that's probably correct, Commissioner Arken. So there will be, even without the waiver, some adjustment, but we are asking for the difference to be waived.
Is your landscaper doing the snow removal too, or is the township going to be doing that?
I don't know. We do this area, the township does the lot for snow removal.
So the landscaping $50,000 does not include?
No.
Snow removal?
Yep. Plantings, maintaining, mulching, things like that. Yes. Watering, because there'll be, there won't be any ground recharge there. That's the best I can give you.
No further comments or questions? Nope.
Talk about it being concessions, but really if we're going to trade, it's not a concession. It's kind of like, we're doing this for you, but it's going to cost you. So, yeah, I don't know. It doesn't strike me the right way. So in other words, we're making exceptions for you to be able to build this building, you know, because it's a special use area, a conditional use area. And we're just saying, well, you need to maintain the park or the green area, the green areas. And you're like, okay, we'll do that. But then whatever that cost is, we're going to take it away from something else. That's not, you know, it doesn't sit right with me.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, seeing no one, we're left, and no staff comment here on anything. Mr. Norsini already did his thing, so we're left coming to a vote.
Yeah, I just want it on record that I'm not okay with waiving the fee. I'm probably going to vote because I don't want to destroy an entire, you know, all the hard work and friendly negotiations that have gone on. I'm okay with the lights. I don't like the waiver on the fee, so just on record for that.
I would actually make a statement that's a little bit different in that the back care and the front care and I guess the whole care of the park and the back lot is going to be $50,000 annually. And we were asking for a one-time payment of $148,000. So I think we're getting a good deal. That's just my sidebar. Okay, we're going to call a vote on Resolution 2024-147. Oh.
Just one...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before you do that.
Okay, thank you.
So you have a resolution with waivers in it. I heard some additional waivers tonight, one of which is the park and rec fee. So if that's going to be waived, I need to add that to the resolution. I also need to add the six-month review of the parking lot construction as another condition to the resolution. So in terms of what you're voting on, that's what you would be voting on. What you have in front of you in writing, in addition to that additional waiver of the park and rec fee, and then the six-month condition, the parties get together, see if the lighting works. So they're the additions to what you already have in writing in front of you. That's your vote.
You took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you. I will rephrase it. We're going to vote on Resolution 2024-147, looking for an approval on the preliminary land development plan for 60 West Avenue as amended per what Mr. Rice just said.
As described by...
As described, to change the lighting for an evaluation in six months and to change the park and recreation fee for the ongoing care of the park area and the parking lot. Good?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Just hope everyone remembers that we...
All right, we're going...
...for more money for lights. Yeah. Well...
Item C is Ordinance 2024-08, which would be the adoption authorizing the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township to select and appropriate by eminent domain certain real estate in Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania for municipal parking, stormwater management, and other municipal purposes. Also authorizing the institution of eminent domain proceedings for the acquisition of land, the furnishing of security for the payment of damages in accordance with the law, and the ability of certain officers of Radnor Township to act for it in all procedures and actions required by the eminent domain code. I am going to just let people know that we, in fact, are making good progress in negotiations with the Wayne Presbyterian Church. And I would like to continue this until the 1/27/25 Board of Commissioners meeting. Could I have a motion for that?
Sooner.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. I don't think I even need any comment, right? Okay. You're continued, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Sorry you waited so long. Resolution 2024-141, authorization of the payment change order number one to Hobbs and Company Incorporated for the revised connection to the power source for the electric vehicle charging station project in the amount of $126,750 to be funded from the 2024 Facilities Bond with the previously approved contract base amount of $211,220 to be funded from a grant from the Pennsylvania DCED Local Shares Account. Could I have a motion, please? And a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Agnew. Thank you. Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, in a much calmer fashion, Commissioner. So the township awarded a contract for EV charging stations. This was grant-based, the funding for this was grant-based, for police cars and charging stations. We based this contract off a meeting with, I'll say Contractor A, where we thought we were going to be able to connect to a pole 30 feet from the project. A design build was based on that. Subsequent to that, as the contractor that was awarded the design build, PICO informed us the fact that, no, you have a transformer at the other end of your property, that's where you have to tap in. That's over 350 feet away. So it was a big change. We worked with this contractor going through various options. One was trenching down the driveway. We looked at overhead, we looked at everything. And the most economical, the best value is literally we're going to run it through the building. That's the proposal. But that work at prevailing wage plus material comes up to that change order. And I know it's a big ask to come to the board, to ask for a change order of that magnitude before the project has even started, but that's where we are and that's how we got here.
Thank you. Any Commissioner questions or comments? So I'm just a little bit confused. So the total cost will be the 126 plus the 211? Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, good. Then I understand. Thanks.
I have a question.
Yep. Commissioner Riley?
How many charging spots is this?
So we're going to have, this is, as it sits, it will be for the police cars, which we already own, the EV, the electric cars that we already own. There's going to be a total of six spots down the side, one of which will be a, well, two, will be a fast charge, right? And there's conduit will be run for possible future other stations. So everything will be on the side of the parking lot where the police currently park, adjacent to Creek Drive. We're going to run some conduit across the other end of the parking lot so that if more cars are bought and there's more expansion needed, and there's always thought of, at one point, possibly public EV charging.
Sorry, while I'm here. Rose Tree Park, have you been there?
Yes, sir.
And have you seen that charging?
Yes.
Circle or whatever? Yeah. It probably is six, four, six, some number. Yeah. I think it's good. Thanks.
Commissioner Coats?
This is what, about 340 all-in? How much of that is actually going to be covered by the grant? So is the 126 budget amount, is that how it's broken out?
So I guess the way to look at this is it's a grant project that we have a cost overrun. I am going to point to my colleague, Mr. Tate, the Finance Director, to get into some of that for us. Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Sure, happy to jump in. The, this was all part of the township's clean energy plan adopted in 2021 for a series of clean energy improvements and is also part of the facility bond that was, we just approved and settled on in the past month. So there was a series of energy-related projects. The township had the opportunity to apply for a grant over about two years ago and was awarded a significant amount of money, $400,000. Those proceeds were applied for charging stations and the electric vehicles. And what we're seeing here is just that incremental amount over the grant monies that the township has to pay out of the capital fund, out of the bond funds, to complete the project. So that's some of the background on it. It's part of the larger renewable energy and conservation plan adopted by the board in 2021.
Yeah, so the 126 is just the amount that's not covered by the grant funds that we awarded?
That is correct.
That's just the difference, right?
Exactly.
Is this in any way going to affect the other solar project we had going on for the facilities buildings?
No, currently the other solar projects are, I believe, bid, we're in the process of having bid documents prepared. And the pricing estimates, there's, we're still in the infancy of spending the bond proceeds. So this is, there's plenty of room in the bond proceeds to complete the solar energy and new roof on this building, the solar panels and new roof on the Public Works Building. What's in front of you tonight, complete this project. And then we'll continue into the next phase after we get through this initial, these initial projects.
Thank you.
If, just, just to add on to that, that's a great explanation from the finance side. From the energy, electricity side, the answer is also no. The electricity that is provided to this building for its operation, pre or post solar panel addition, will not be impacted by what we're doing with this specific project to run electricity to the charging stations. Two separate sources.
Thank you. That's helpful. So the solar on the roof won't have anything to do with the EV chargers, right? It'll all run down the trench, which is, has the ability to be expanded in the future without redigging?
So we have a certain amount of capacity for this lot, but maybe the board and the manager want to put some in the lower lot for public parking. We still have a transformer to tap off of.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Any public participation on this one? Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote on Resolution 2024-141. All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. And we're off to the budget. Item A is Ordinance 2024-10. This would be the adoption of the 2025 comprehensive budget by setting the township real estate millage rate and adopting the appropriations for 2025. Could I have a motion, please?
Sooner.
And a second? Mr. White?
Thank you. Just a real quick recap on where we're at tonight is, as the ordinance title indicates, this was discussed in detail at the last Board of Commissioner meeting, and the budget was amended as a result of that conversation to include the real estate millage adjustment that's noted in the ordinance language directly, as well as the additional revenue recognition for a credit card fee. We added the economic development position budget as well as the $25,000 that we had been talking about all along to get started with the zoning rewrite toward the end of 2025 after the completion of both the comp plan and the Wayne Master Plan projects. And in terms of community funding, this eliminated the funding for Suri Services and added the $20,756 for the library, which was 50% of their requested amount, and 50% of the requested amount of the art center, which equated to 2,500. So those are the changes that were discussed and directed upon during the last conversation, this budget that was advertised for... This budget that was advertised for tonight included those elements.
Thank you, good summary. All right. Discussion. Commissioner Agnew?
Well, I've discussed with as many of you before, up to this point. I would like us to reinstate, if that's the right term, whatever the term would be, the amount that we cut from the library. I think that we've heard from the community, tonight especially, all the important points. But I just wanna really reemphasize that what they're asking for is a cost of living raise. And the amount that, especially the first-line people are paid, I don't wanna, it's embarrassing. And so to deny them a cost of living raise, just to me, just goes against sort of any good, I don't know, thing that we should be doing. Especially in light of all of the good that the library does. I think just supporting the people who work there with a cost of living raise is not too much to ask, so I'd like to have that money reinstated.
$27,000.
Whatever it was, yes, or whatever.
Okay, any other comment?
Well, one other thing. Should we wait for that for... We also talked about, and I talked to Bill about adding $4,000 to the Public Works budget, and that would include the planting of perennials, sort of the greenifying of Wayne, or I'm sorry, Wayne, of Radnor Township. Basically, it would be through a plant, little seed, plantlings, I don't know, not really a green thumb, I don't know what you call them, plugs, 2,000 of them, to give away throughout the township. They will not be maintained at all. All this will be done by the EAC. They will not be maintained by the, by Public Works. It really won't be any more additional work to the Public Works, maintained by the residents.
I don't know how much, though.
Bill or Bob, do you know what the EAC budget is? We just had this meeting like a year ago where they...
$3,000.
Got a budget.
Yeah, so we have incorporated $3,000 that the EAC has used for speaker series and other miscellaneous expenses. I just, this is probably more detail than we need to get into, but just for my own sanity. The accounting for that is housed in the administrative miscellaneous line. So there's not a dedicated budget for any of the boards or commissions. So the $3,000 is accounted for in a miscellaneous expense line in the Administration Department. The conversation with Commissioner Agnew is, was, Public Works has a certain amount in their budget for supplies. And I envisioned a program like this coming up through the EAC that ultimately, if the board endorses or directs us to move forward with, the expense would come out of Public Works' supply and maintenance, because that, that's where we're buying other things that are similar in what, in scope.
So the trees, for instance, that we buy for the bare root tree planting, that's a sort of a miscellaneous, no?
Ah, no, that's totally different, because we do have a commemorative shade tree fund.
Ah, yes, if they get out of the fines.
Yeah, those dollars are accounted for completely outside of the general fund. And so the cost of purchasing the trees comes out of that fund where we get donations, annual donations from Shanna Claire, as well as the accounting for the fines that are assessed for tree removal or people who choose to pay the fee instead of planting. All of that money's accounted for in the shade tree fund. So that's where the shade tree's a little different.
And Commissioner Agnew, this would be a $4,000 of native plant plugs or...
Perennials, yes.
Perennials. That would be administered through the EAC, but the funds would come out of Public Works, a sort of miscellaneous Public Works fund?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that I understood, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Any other Commissioner comments or questions about the budget? No? Oh, go ahead.
Are we adding those things to this?
Well, I can make an amendment here. I just wanted to be sure if somebody didn't have strong objections or support for them. Okay? You don't have anything to say? Okay. All right, then I am going to suggest that we adopt Ordinance 2024-10 with the following amendments.
Sorry, one quick question. Bill or Bob, does Commissioner Agnew's request for additional funding for library and EAC change the bottom line and the millage in any way?
So, the, if you'll recall, at the last meeting when we tallied up all of the changes as we were going through real time, there was a resulting surplus in the general fund of $190,283. So the additional expenses that we've talked about here would just come out of that. So it will not change the millage. It does change the bottom line, but it does not change the millage.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, thank you. Not a problem, so...
Do we need to re-advertise, or are we okay as this?
Yeah, exactly, we're changing it.
Solicitor, did we get our answer? We don't have to re-advertise? This would still be an approval?
Right, you're just moving money around.
All right, so I'm gonna say again, we're gonna have a call a vote on Ordinance 2024-10. Ah, thank you. No, that was very good. Is there any public comment on this issue? Thank you. Seeing none, for the third time. Ordinance 2024-10, the 2025 comprehensive budget as amended to reinstate the other 50% of the library's funding and to add a $4,000 to the Public Works' miscellaneous fund for native perennial plantings by the EAC. All in favor? Aye? Unanimous. All right, Ordinance, B, Ordinance 2024-11, up for adoption, is the sanitary sewer rent rate for 2025. Mr. Tate?
Before we kick this off to Mr. Tate, who is gonna run with this? I just, I just wanted to close on that last ordinance and thank the board very much for your continued support and the dialogue that took place over the last couple of months. It is very, very much appreciated from the staff's perspective, so thank you.
Thank you. We don't get too many compliments, so that's good. All right, Mr. Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. Before you tonight, Ordinance 2024-11 will establish the sewer rent rate, as previously introduced, at a rate that is a 3.9% increase over last, over the current year. It's an increase of 49 cents per 1,000 gallons of water consumed. And the new rate will go from $1,262 to $13.11. And that money will go to provide some added revenue to support some of the increased contracted services costs and other capital projects that we'll endeavor upon in 2025.
Thank you. Any Commissioner questions or comments about the sewer rate? Any public participation? Seeing none, I'm gonna call a vote on Ordinance 2024-11, adopting the sanitary sewer rate for 2025. All in favor? Aye. We have tabled item C under budget, so we're on to reports of board liaisons. Anyone? There you go. All right, new business? I have one item. I would propose to cancel the 12/23 Board of Commissioners meeting. Can I have a motion? What? Thank you. Second, you can second it, Commissioner Larkin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So happy holidays to everybody, and we'll be back on 1/6/25, unless there's old business. Seeing none, final public participation? None, all right. Could I have a motion to adjourn? And a second? All in favor? We're adjourned.